Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, the proud home of the University of North Dakota. This is the time for the Grand Forks Growth Fund and the Jobs Development Authority. First item on the agenda, roll call.
Michael?
Here.
Lunskey, here, clever.
Good.
Lunskey, here. Bonnie?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
And Mary Richards?
Here. Very good. Thank you. Item 2.1, request for lease termination form communications. Mr. Phil.
Chair, whoever and members of the Jobs Development Authority. We had a really good meeting and thanks for your initial recommendation at the last JDA meeting to take a further review and look at further options for the JDA. So in the meantime, we did follow up with various entities that are noted in your staff report that are interested in this Grand Forks real space. The importance of the Grand Forks real space is that it doesn't have the EDA requirements. And so obviously, we're going to be in charge in the reinvestment in that area, but they can be longer term leases that would fit the building and where we're going to my tech accelerator perspective. And so we did follow up with the Growth Fund Committee. They did unanimously, they had lots of great questions and did follow up, but it's either now or within the next year. And so if we're going to get the space fitted up, regardless, we're going to have some downtime. So if we should move forward at this point in time. And so that was a recommendation from that, the Growth Fund Committee. Also want to note beyond the interest that we did have a really good advisory meeting this past week and lots of excitement with current users and other interest in that. So I think there's a lot of excitement. Mary Richards also let me know that the EDA leases have been approved. So you're going to start seeing tenants in the building now that EDA endeavor have signed up on those. And so some of those entities that have been waiting to move in will be able to move in now. And you'll also see further starting this summer and fall, a lot of programming regarding the tech accelerator, but also upskilling that we talked about too. So you're going to really see a lot of activity starting this summer and into the fall with people that are working out here and also programming. So with that, I'd answer any questions and I know you likely have to have a public hearing on this.
Thank you, Tom. With that, open the public hearing on item 2.1. Does anyone wish to speak to this item? Hearing no one wishing to speak, we'll close the public hearing. JDA members, any comments or questions, Mr. President Sandeep?
Question, Mr. Phil? So would there be an option for us to build the suit? Somebody comes in and wants to lease that space and they have a specific fit up that they want? Are we able to do that? Or do we have specific requirements that we have to build that space to, which is why we're going to make the investment in the fit up and then it is what it is? What's the point there?
Council President Sandeep, that's a very good question. We talked a lot about that. We have, I think, six entities that are interested. You know, some I think are going to just want common space, others I think are going to want locked offices. And so we're going to work with all the various entities that are noted in there and look at what their needs are upfront, you know, after this meeting, if we move forward. Arrow will be in there for another month. And so we'll work with all those various entities on what their space needs and what kind of office setup they need and come back to you with a further concept that makes sense for that space.
And so if we're funding the fit up and the additional, that we be recouping our costs and we will get a lease, correct?
We will be, yep, along with the DDA, Bull and Hammond. And if it's something that we're going to ask for above and beyond, we may have to talk about that from a construction perspective.
Thank you, Ms. I'll take a quick moment, Ms. Richards, congratulations. This building represents a complicated amount of work, creative work using the federal funds. And I know that the approval of those final leases or that final approval for the leases has been a tricky step as well. Congratulations on that.
President, if I could concur, we want Ms. Richards to stay as long as she can. She's done a lot of great projects, but this is another great capstone project that Meredith has worked on. So the whole entire team is thankful that she's still here leading them and she does so much and does it so quietly.
Mr. Weber? Mayor? Chair Weber, I, you know, to me, I think it's as simple as dollars and cents. You've got, you know, a tenant right now that's about $15 an hour, $15 a square foot. We can, we need to do a two to three month fit up or longer, whether they're in here or it's holding us from having a $20 tenant later. I'd rather have that happen while you have $15 tenant than a $20 tenant. So you're changing a lower, a shorter lease for a long-term lease at a higher rate. I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward now that we've seen this ground swap in different companies that have interest in being here. I think it shows that it's a space that will be utilized in a very short order.
And is that a motion? Is that a motion approved? You have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Second from Mrs. Soski. Any further questions, comments? Oh, Mr. Phil, just please.
Two things that have been spoken out. We are, as part of this construction project, the H vac units will get installed this year due to supply chains. Those are delayed, so you'll see those come to fruition. And then we'll also come back with some roof improvements that we need to make on the building. And I think those are the two last major pieces regarding the building, other than some internal pit up projects.
Very good. With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post and sign, motion passes unanimously. Item 2.2, request for proposals for naming rights, sponsorships at the Hyatt and Sweets.
Thank you. More on this building. The request tonight is to authorize staff to issue a request for proposals for naming rights for the various, thank you, for the various spaces within this building. You may recall last February, we issued a request for proposals for naming rights for the building itself, for the exterior. This public process is required since we are selling an asset. Once we go through this public process, then we can accept proposals just on a first come, first served basis. We did not get any response to that first RFP. This second RFP, assuming you authorize us to issue it, we will, in conjunction with issuing the RFP, host, we're planning to host kind of a soft launch of this facility, targeting potential donors and sponsors to, you know, build interest in that. The draft RFP in your package shows a May date. We're looking now at early June, but presumably now with all the kind words that have been spoken, this building is more or less finished. We think it will do a lot to just get people into the building and see what a great space it is in terms of interest in sponsors and naming rights. So that certainly willing to answer any questions, but the request is just the author. I need to go ahead and issue that RFP.
Very good. With that, I'll open the public hearing on item 2.2. Does anyone wish to speak on item 2.2? Hearing no one, close that public hearing. Any questions or comments? Motion from Mr. Colm, second from President Sandy. Any questions on the motion? Hearing no one, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. She passes unanimously, thank you, Ms. Richards. And item 2.3, EDA RLF update and plan certificate, Ms. Richards.
Me again. In terms of an update, you may recall that this was a COVID response CARES Act funded grant that the city received from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. We received 1.5 million approximately of that about a year ago today. We completed loaning out 1.4 million of that. The good news is that the payments are starting to come in. Those payments revolve and we get to keep them. That kind of plays into the recertification part. We have submitted a plan to EDA when we got the funds. That plan mostly focused on that initial dispersment in terms of meeting the COVID response needs. Now that we're entering the revolve phase, we said at the time that this would mirror our previous EDA RLF that was also disaster recovery from 25 years ago, with the focus of those funds being gap financing for primary sector businesses. EDA does like us to recertify that plan annually, so that's what we're here for. As you know, we're in the process of wrapping up a strategic planning activity with the Growth Fund Committee. And so at the conclusion of that, we may have some more specific uses for this, perhaps targeting it to, well, we haven't decided that, but something, for instance, targeting daycare so that we can address workforce with gap financing for daycare facilities. In any case, what we're asking for is just authorization to provide an interim recertification to EDA. And then after we wrap up that strategic planning activity, we'll come back with a final kind of updated plan that really focuses on the revolve phase rather than the initial dispersment. In terms of updates, it's all pretty good news. Our default rate is pretty low considering this is disaster recovery and we're looking at having nearly half a million dollars revolve by the end of this year. So we'll be looking at ways to get that spent and help make EDA happy with our utilization. So that, again, happy to answer any questions, but the request is to just recertify the existing RLF.
Very good. Again, thank you and congratulations to you and Colin for the work on this.
Yes, this is great, Mary.
Yes. With that, I'll open the public hearing on item 2.3. Does anyone wish to speak, item 2.3? Hearing no one, close the public hearing. Looking for a discussion or a motion related to certifying the existing RLF plan currently approved by the EDA.
I'm approved.
Got motion and second motion, President Sandy, second from Mrs. Soski. Any questions to the motion? Hearing no one, all in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion passes unanimously. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion second, here we go. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Need adjourn, thank you. All right, a little longer, we'll call over the Board of Equalization, which consists of the City Council of Grand Forks. Welcome, everybody, roll call please, Marine.
Michael?
Here.
Lunskey, here, clever.
Here.
Lunskey, here. Bonnie?
Here.
Sandy?
Here. So I believe there's a total of 13 protests. But I guess you want to read off, I'll just read off item 1.2 and then I'll start going through it and start starts.
1.2 then is considerable test recommendations from the city's assessment of the properties.
So first of all, I thank you, Seth. I know you guys did a lot of work following up and going out to new lease properties and working with them. It looks like E and L have been withdrawn, so now we're just going to be speaking to A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, and K. And we'll just take them one at a time. Is there any words before we start? Just those are.
I do, I just really wanted to kind of give you a quick review of what we got to this evening. April 3rd was our initial equalization evening for all property owners within the city of Grand Forks to appeal their values. The property owners that appealed and spoke up or emailed us for that evening are the properties and the owners that we are talking and discussing tonight. If there are property owners within the city that wish to appeal their values, they can go to the county at the county level to take care of it at that level as well. So, but tonight, just wanted to bring out that we are only discussing the net of 11 properties this evening.
All right, let me take them one at a time and start with A, 720 North Fourth Street.
Yes, so this property is a single family home. I can make this very short because in my staff report, I've given you the reasons for that, what we found in our inspections, the conditions of the properties. And I, if you allow me to go a little rogue here, the four residential properties that we had appealed, their conditions in all cases were different than what we anticipated and knew. So I do, we have, we want to, we recommend lowering the value in all of them. We've made sure that our value is supported by the sales that have happened within our city within the last year. And if we haven't had the sales within the last year, we've gone back, but our values are supportable by the sales that have occurred. And so if you have questions on any one of them in particular, I surely would answer any of those.
So you're regarding A through D, right?
A through Ds, but I will take one and to approve or to make the motion to approve, but unless we have a question.
So the property owners, have they been told what they're new and are they still going to continue to appeal or?
To my knowledge, we have had conversations with them and discussed what our needs were and they are in agreement with our new values.
And if we approve A through D tonight and they still decide that they're not in agreement, they still have the opportunity to go to the county and for further discussion. I will move to A through D.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to, give a second. Here we go, second. I'm going to list them off just for the record then, and then I want to make sure no one's here to speak on those items. So A would be 720 North Fourth Street, B would be 409 North Third Street, C would be 314 North Eighth Street, and D would be 201 Chestnut Street. Is there anybody here to speak on those four properties? All right, now we've got a motion and a second. So we have that motion to be to accept the city's assessment. Your motion is second, any further comment? I'm seeing none, all is in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll run it. Now we have commercial properties, if you want to take these in a block, you want to do one at a time.
Let's take them one at a time, I think.
So we'll do that. Now we're on to 1.2 F, which would be 2800 South Armory Road.
Correct. This is the Sears Pharmacy, Sears Building and Parking Lot. This, the Sears Building, Sears owns the two parcels. So they own the parcel with the building on it and they lease, have a long-term lease with the mall or the parking lot. So they have the interest in that parking lot and that's how they're able to appeal this value. I have valued this property using our cost approach. We've supported that valuation with our income approach and it's bracketed by the sales that we've had within the city on a square foot basis. As you know, the cost approach is what we rely on most heavily to value commercial, all properties, but especially important with commercial because of the difference extras that can be involved in each property. A point in my income approach is we, my income approach is valuing the property as it sits. So I'm looking at it as a single tenant occupancy where that tenant, it's a triple net lease. And what that triple net lease is that tenant is going to pay for the taxes or taxes, insurance, and utilities. So that's what, that's how I've done it. We've used market rent for that large of a building. We've used vacancy rates and expenses in a larger cap rate than typical, but it's consistent with what we have done with other big properties. Our indicated value from the income approach is the 3,845. My cost approach was 3,844. Coincidentally, they're very close. That doesn't happen very often, but in this case that is. So, and we've had the recent sales to support this value. They range from $16 to $45 per square foot. In addition, I'm equitable with other acres in that area. For the land and improvement, Sears is valued at $35.49. JC Penney is at 37.66 and Macy's at 36.62. I have, when we looked at, I also looked at the land as it sits, when the land is worth more than the property as it sits, it's really hard to lower the value. So I do recommend that we uphold the value of 3,844,000.
All right, with approval, whoever, thanks to approve. Mr. Cabana, seconds for the comment. So motion to adjourn, again, except the city's assessment. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We're on to G, 2273, 329 South.
The next property that we have is Lithia Ford, and I think we do have Mr. Tanabom. He emailed me that he was going to be on with us this evening.
Would you like to have Mr. Tanabom speak first?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Tanabom, it looks like we got to 480 numbers, are you sir?
Yes, correct.
All right, please, floor is yours.
Okay, we do have two different appeals today, two different cases. They're both dealership properties. And to be honest, this one, I just want to make sure, this one's actually the superior case that we have. The other dealership case we have, to be honest, we're very close on improvements for the county. And the reason I bring that up is that's really our main issue when it comes to dealerships is the improvement value. We tend to value these dealerships and I'll try to be brief. I don't know how much time I have, but throughout the nation, we have many hundreds of dealerships we represent because what happens is it's very difficult on income. There's hardly any income. They're usually owner occupied. Almost all of the dealerships we have are owner occupied, so it's hard to get anything. And there's various sections of the dealership. When it comes to market sales, there's two issues with that. One is every dealership is very unique. I mean, they have such different sections and they're valued very differently per Marshall and Swift or per cost, so it's difficult to value them per another sale. Additionally, most sales include other factors, personal property, inventory, franchise fees, licensing fees. So it's very hard to, even if an ownership says it's real property, it's very hard to actually look at a market sale and try to figure out what the actual land and improvements were just for a sale. So to us, we are left with, in most counties throughout the nation that we deal with now, understand that and actually look at the cost approach most of the time for dealerships. And when it comes to dealerships in general, it's usually the improvement value when we do get reductions quite a bit off of that. The land is very difficult. There's not usually a lot of land comps right on the same street or the same size, and it's difficult to prove a much lower land value. So when it comes to this property and most dealerships that we deal with, it's really the cost approach and lower improvements that we're looking at. And you'll see the difference between this case and the next case when we get there, but this one really is the case that we're most concerned about because what you'll notice is, first thing is it's a very basic dealership that was built in 1998. These type of dealerships due to market, et cetera, need to remodel it over the years. And this one has not really kept up to pace with some of the newer dealerships. And as far as the value, if we go to page, I'm sorry, two of our packet, the dealership in total is valued by the county at $8,38,000 or $141.57. I do know that's an increase from the prior year, but I know each year stands on its own. So it's a little over $8 million for the dealership by the county. We have a cost approach that gives us a value according to our page number two of close to 5 million, but that's a little misleading because we do have land comps that support lower. I just don't think we have enough land comps and that kind of skews our cost approach to be much lower. But I'll get to that when I get to our cost approach. What is important to note is that on page three, you have some information on the subject property, again, built in 1998. The building's square feet is 56,779 square feet on 7.86 acres. It is a large piece of land and that needs to be taken into account on what the per square foot value should be. But again, as noted here on, I believe, our page number three, the county's land value is $6.44 a square foot. Unfortunately, we don't have similar sized land comps that sold to us in the last few years that would support a lower value. So that's going to be difficult to get lower the land portion of the cost. But the improvement value is really what we believe, especially given the year built to the subject, is not worth 5.8 million rounded. And that's the amount that the county gives for the subject improvements is 5 million, a little over 5.8 million, as you can see on our page three. Let me get back to our property here. I actually hit the wrong button, so if you just give me one second here. For some reason I exited. Okay, so on our page three, again, you'll notice the improvements are on for $102.71. So the majority of the value is on the improvements for the subject property. Following pages is where the subject is located. We give you some aerials, we give you a front view, a more closer view to show you that there's nothing really special about this dealership, rectangular, very average built for 1998. Now, what's interesting, even though it's average built, on page nine, our main evidence, we actually give a newer effective year because these properties are somewhat remodeled, but this one has not been tremendously, but we still gave it the benefit of the doubt. And for example, we broke down each section. And for example, the first section here of the showroom, built 1998, but we gave it a 2005 effective year. The other sections, we gave essentially 2000 effective year because those aren't really remodeled much at all through the years, the warehouse, the service repair garage, et cetera. But what we did was, these are numbers strictly from Marshall and Swift, which is what most, whether it's counties or most agents, et cetera, people use to value cost per Marshall and Swift. Now, what's interesting about this is, again, we just plug in the numbers here and you'll notice that, for example, we do it for every dealership. On the next dealership, we're not, we're close to the county's value on improvements, but this one we are not. So, for example, we take every section without taking too much time, you know, whether it's effective year, class, type, et cetera. We take the replacement cost new number per those sections for Marshall Swift, for example, showroom, $129 a square foot to the far right there. We take a current multiplier, we take a local multiplier, all those add to the value. So it doesn't help us whatsoever, but those are supposed to be in there. Depreciation, we take per Marshall and Swift. We take every single section per those factors and then we add about 250,000, we added for paving, lighting, what have you, which is more than reasonable given this, the year of the property. And what ends up happening is we also added a 10% entrepreneurial profit, which is questionable since these are all owner user properties. And if somebody were going to buy it with a different dealership, where's the profit? They would have to remodel it per their specifications, but conservatively, 10% is more than conservative for this type of property. So if you take all those factors, we have what we call the RC NLD or replacement cost new, less depreciation, but including other factors and entrepreneurial profit. And we have a value on our page nine of 4,95,719. Now that improvement value is approximately 1.8 million less than the county. So there's a very large number there difference between our improvement value and the county's. And hopefully you'll take into account our improvement value and come up with an overall lower value. Just so you're aware, we have Marshall Swift pages all given here, all the sections on the following pages after page nine. The following pages after page nine include the areas, the replacement cost new number per Marshall Swift on C average. And then we've also included other pages in here as far as the life expectancy, depreciation tables, and even the multiplier tables. And so we've shown you exactly how we arrived at our improvement numbers. The only thing extra that we have in this packet is on page 19, unfortunately, we only provided two land sales. So I'm going to have to leave it up to the board. The land sale one is similar because it's, it's almost nine acres and we're almost eight acres and it sold for 212. But again, we put the location of that on page 20 and we did a full coast star printout of those land sales. But that's really difficult because we've only provided two land sales, one similar size, but not necessarily extremely close to the subject. So overall, to be fair, on a cost basis, it seems, especially on the improvements, that there should be an overall lower value. And that completes our presentation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tanabom. Is there any questions on the board? This time for him.
You have a question, now please, Mr. Cabana. Just a question on comps, I think it was provided, some were provided by Pivot Tax Solutions, but are we using the sale of the Toyota dealership as a comp? So I'm assuming that's our information that we're.
That's our information, yeah.
And then we're showing, you know, the comps at $245 a square foot for the Mandan space, which is the improvement to the land. And that's their number or our number, just to clarify?
Mandan information is new dealerships that were built with cost at comp, in their, their actual cost to build.
Yeah, so it's not directly congruent?
Correct. In my response, any other questions before I move on?
All right, please.
My response to all of that is that the cost approach that Mr. Tanabom provided to us, I feel should be disregarded. He's valuing it as an average build, average quality building. It is better than that when you use that. It should be more of a good quality. And when I look at the descriptions provided in Marshall and Swift, that is what is most fitting for this property. By using that average quality, of course, then the depreciation is accelerated, so that's going to underestimate and undervalue the property. There were items that weren't included in his cost approach, basement area, sprinklers, underground fuel tanks, elevators, office maintenance, mezzanine, and some missed square footage of a warehouse and automotive services. The land value that he provided, the comps that he provided are, the one is raw land, not applicable to this property, and the other one is a residential lot. I have sale, I provided sales for you in my packet of land sales within the proximity of this property that support our land value. So recapping, undergrading of the property, accelerated depreciation, missing building components, land value that's not reflective, all contribute to undervaluing this property. And then we have the two sales that happened within our city. One's a vacant dealership, one is the Toyota. And I confirmed all the sellers or the buyers, excuse me, that it did not include any franchise fees, did not include any personal property. He provided me with the closing statement, 6.2 is what he paid for it. So with all of that information, I recommend that we uphold our value.
Do you see the same arguments hold for item H?
Yes. Okay, yes. I think they are the same arguments. I think in your staff report though, if you refresh, let's finish. let's finish this one before I go to that one, please. Any other questions for me?
Vice President Weber, a lot of this seems to hinge on the judgment between good and average, which sounds like a very subjective judgment, but actually you provided us with the criteria. These are actually quite objective, discrete categories. Could you speak to that for just a moment longer? You've already addressed it. What's the difference between good and average?
Good and average is going to be the quality, the materials used, flooring, updates, storefront, this block, stucco, I mean, there's a variety of things that are going to encompass the good quality building versus an average quality building. If I go back to our sales, an average quality building is the sale that sold at South Washington, thirteen hundred South Washington, that's an average quality construction.
Thanks, thanks for that. What I was getting at was, it could almost sound like a matter of opinion. This is good or average. It seems that the criteria listed here, that it's actually far more specific than that, but there are numerous aspects that you go through and identify. It isn't simply one person's opinion over another. These things have been classified.
Yes.
Thanks.
Am I allowed to have a rebuttal or a closing on this?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, so I probably, I've done this eleven years. I've probably done maybe close to three hundred dealerships at least, and I've visited countless amounts of dealerships, and I've dealt with what the counties look at on dealerships, and I can tell you it's C average, and here's why. First of all, it's very specific, yes, in Marshall and Swift, but it's very close. And what we've come to realize is this, if it, there's only three categories, well, there's four low cost, but C excellent would be not just a new building, but hardly anyone uses C excellent. It has to be not only a brand new dealership, but one that's construction design and quality is vastly superior to any other dealership that's new. So what is after excellent? There's only good and average. A good dealership is typically between five to fifteen years old, and it's not only five to fifteen years old, but typically at least is average or superior in construction design quality, et cetera. The subject property is not only over twenty years old, but all the materials, construction design, et cetera, are average. So we don't see anything else but average for this type of dealership, and that's consistent as far as we're concerned throughout the nation, but that's all we have.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Marchinsky, I've got a question.
Yeah, Mr. Weiger, please.
Has the gentleman visited this dealership in question?
Somebody at our, somebody here has. At our, at Pivotal Tax, meaning I've talked to them about it. I've visited many, but not this one.
Okay.
All right, it's up to the board this time. I know, I think we've had, Brandon, you go year by year. This is, I think every year we have done this one and looked at it.
Yeah, I think this is the second year off the top of my head that they have appealed.
Well, it's higher value this year, too.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weber, I'll move to uphold the twenty twenty-three true and full values listed on the staff report. We've got a motion from Vice President Weber and second from President Sandy. Any further comment from council? All right, sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries now, honestly.
So the reason I asked to hold on to vote number H is it appeared that we may have had a duplicate stock report attached to item number H, which is the Lithia Chrysler Center. So I'm wanting to make sure that you have that information there.
You've got their laptops, they want to pull. Make sure it's not, was it a repeat of G's of the issue?
Yes. My apologies that I did not catch that.
The same staff reports, it was just a typo on the agenda.
Essentially the same. My comments and arguments are going to be the same on this particular one as we were on the Lithia floor.
All right, sorry, has been, do we have Mr. Tannenbaum representing this, H as well? Was that encapsulated, Mr. Tannenbaum? Are you still there? Was that kind of encapsulated in your previous statements, or is there more that you wanted to add on item H?
Well, the only thing I wanted to add is that on this one, even if you add, I think we left out entrepreneur profit, even if you add that, we're only about two hundred thousand or so difference in improvement value. We just want to point that out versus the other dealership, and maybe next year you'll, it'll be maybe more fair looking at the cost approach into the taxpayer, but that's up to you. That's all we have.
So, good. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Got a motion to uphold, and we have a second, the motion President Sandy second from Vice President Weber, for the council on item H. All right, sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries down, honestly. There we go. I, thirty-four fifty-three, second evidence.
Yes, so I'll go rogue on you again. A, I, J, and K are all holiday gas stations and convenience stores with car washes. My comments are the same.
Do we have someone here to speak on those items this evening?
Not to my knowledge.
Just going to open it for them. I'm going to list off, so I will be thirty-four fifty-three, second evidence, south. J would be twenty-two fifty, South Columbia Road, and K would be four thousand five, South Washington Street. I don't know anyone here to speak on those items, those properties. All right, see none, so why don't you, yeah, if you want to continue, please.
So I've gone through these cost, Marshall and Swift's cost approaches, again, that have been submitted. They use a mild climate. There's nothing about us that is mild. We are definitely cold and extreme. They've accelerated depreciation again, they've undervalued the land. I mean, we kind of go through the same items that we talked about with the other, the other properties. But twenty-two fifty, South Columbia Road. So they have the inaccurate climate rating, overstated, or accelerated depreciation, they missed underground storage tanks, and the underestimated land values. All of those contribute to underestimating the value, and this particular one, we are recommending that we uphold the value, a million seventy-nine thousand.
So I, J, you're recommending uphold the value?
Yes, and that's my reason for my pausing is to make sure that I got the right numbers.
Okay.
Because there is one that I
No, I was like, item K, which is four zero zero five, South Washington Street, you did have an adjustment on that one, if you explain that just?
Yes, we had a canopy listed twice. So that accounted for the reduction, the requested reduction.
So you have that in your staff report as your recommendation, so if we just approve your recommendation all through, that would be included?
Yes.
All right. All right, we've got a motion to accept the city assessment, second, and the second, so Vice President Sandy, second, Mr. Tannenbaum, any further comments from council? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries down, honestly. On the one point three is the store set.
Certified by twenty twenty-three annual assessments.
So I will certify our true and full value of five million, no, five billion, seven hundred and ninety-one million, hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. That is after all our changes for the tax year of twenty twenty-three. One thing I just wanted to note with you is we've had conversations about where we lie within our state compliance, that state compliance rate is from ninety percent to a hundred percent in our sales ratio and in our values, and we are in compliance with, in both cases, so.
That would be ninety-four, ninety-five percent is what we're at for residential commercial. All right, so your motion certified two thousand point three annual assessments on the other. That motion President Sandy, second from Miss Losowski, any further comments? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries down, honestly. That's attached. All right, thank you. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Their comment, Mr. Sandy?
Quick comment, please. Good job for the assessing department. Really good work this year.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it, and for dealing with the people behind concerns. Thank you so much.
I agree with you. The motion during our second from Miss Losowski, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Thank you to all of you for letting me kind of go off, little off schedule.
All right, we'll move on. Follow order, Grand Fork City Council meeting for Monday, May first, two thousand twenty-three, roll call, please, Marine. All right, thank you. At one point two, we got a bunch of allegiance led by Mr. Ralph Fonda, if you took up your serve, then we're going to do a proclamation. He's got a few comments on the letter carrier stamp out under food drive day coming up here, so. All right, Mr. Fonda, I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'll let you have a open mic time. Letter carrier stamp out under food drive day, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, excuse me. Whereas every year on the second Saturday of May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributed to donations to local food banks. And whereas the letters carriers, letter carrier stamp out under food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the food drive was held in nineteen ninety-one, more than six point seven billion pounds of food have been collected. Whereas we recognize all letter carriers for hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone, thirty-one years of the national letter carrier food drive celebrates in two thousand twenty-three. Therefore, I, Brandon Marchinsky, mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim, Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, is the letter carrier's food drive day. Branch five seventeen in Grand Forks, and calling its citizens to join in the recognition and celebration, so. Mr. Fonda, please tell us a little bit about the event that we
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to the city council, the members present here. Food drive started out as a pilot program thirty-one years ago. About three hundred branches got in it. You know, it was just like I said, a pilot program, then our branch jumped into it the next year, and figures vary, but twelve to fifteen hundred branches in ten thousand cities participate in this one-day food drive. I believe it's the largest one-day food drive in the world, and we have been doing it now. The first year that we were into it, another guy was the food drive coordinator, and after that, he didn't want it anymore, and I was at a union meeting. The rest of the people in the union meeting turned to me, I'll send them back. Oh, you're the food drive coordinator, and even though I'm retired, twenty-nine years later, I'm still doing the food drive for this year, which I appreciate. It's it's difficult to say how much we're going to collect and what the process is. But just remember, all of you, and speaking to the entire audience, and those on TV, this is a worthwhile program. That's why we're in it. We're not in it for any praise, we're in it to help those who are struggling. One in one or two children in Grand Forks under the age of ten go to bed hungry. In this nation, that's unacceptable. In this town, it's unacceptable. So the more you give, the better it is. Years ago, when we would do radio and TV interviews, people would call up and tell me, I feel embarrassed about going to a food bank, and I said, why? They said, well, my neighbor might be driving by and seeing me. And I said, next month, he may be driving by the same food bank, and you might see your neighbor in that line. There's no shame accepting food at a food bank. There are five food banks, four in Grand Forks, and one in East Grand Forks. And we help each one of them as much as we can. So if you can't donate any food, you can make out a check to N A L C, branch five seventeen, National Social Association of Letter carriers, branch five seventeen, and will distribute among the, by a food banks. Now, some years ago, I was watching TV, and I'm a fan of old westerns and old mysteries. So there was a movie on, thought in the forties, and it was in front of this hotel. And I seen this guy walking around, and he was either advertising the hotel. He had a sandwich board on it. And a little while, I'll show you what the sandwich board is. This was one-sided. But then the light went off in my head. And if it was in my head, it had to be a pin light, a small light, to go off in my head. But anyway, what do you call it? I thought, well, that'd be a great idea to participate, to pump up our food drive. So I went to a friend of mine who owns a shop. I told him I wanted to, and he says, yeah, I'll give you a deal. Told me the price, and then so I went to another friend of mine and said, I need a check from you. He told me I'll check. And we took off, and then every so often, I'll be, May eighth, I got some appointments, but May eighth, weather permitting, I'll be walking around busy streets of Grand Forks, maybe East Grand Forks, to show you what we do. This is a sandwich board. I designed it, and then a friend of mine made it up. So I'll be walking around the streets of Grand Forks, trying to pump up our food drive. Any participation you can do, I expect a lot of food this year. And people have asked me over the years, what do you expect to collect this year? Will you be disappointed if you don't collect a lot? And I always tell them, I've done newspaper interviews and TV interviews. I said, if all sixty carriers involved went out, and at the end of the day, trucks came back and there was twenty-one can of pork and beans, I'd be happy. Because that's something we didn't have before. I want to thank everybody. The year, May thirteenth, the second Saturday in May is our food drive. It's always the second Saturday. That's why I didn't date this. I always put it to second Saturday in May. And thank you for everybody.
If anybody else receives Ralph, I'll go shake his hand and give him a check, otherwise help participate on May thirteenth, so I really appreciate what you do. All right, a couple announcements today. Looks like we got the first day of May. We don't quite have green grass yet, and all the snow hasn't melted, but it does look like people are all starting to enjoy the trails where they're not flooded, so it's good to see everybody out in the boat. Just this last Thursday, I had a chance to go speak at Central High School with a bunch of kids. The theme was do your personal best, so I enjoyed the event, and I want to thank central staff for inviting me and hosting me. And then over the weekend, I participated in an autism walk just to bring some awareness and raise money over at the Grand Cities Mall, so I want to thank Dr. Tricia Lee and her staff for doing a great job putting that event together, and I really think that would be a great day, so thank you for that. That's all I got for announcements. Move on to two citizen comments.
I have a question comment today, just a question, Ralph.
Ms. Ralph, please.
Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. Twice in the last year, I haven't had a patient to come to your meeting to support people who were supporting various causes. And I was very surprised by the tone of public comments. And I spoke with some of my friends about that, who are also very surprised by it. So I have come to say thank you for allowing people to speak and being gracious to them. I know for myself, I don't always do my best work in a negative atmosphere when people are yelling at me. And I thought that might be true for you, maybe not. So I came today to tell you, there are tens of thousands of people in Grand Forks who think you're doing a good job, and they don't show up because they think they don't have to pay attention. You'll take care of us. Thank you for reading everything you have to read and knowing what you have to know. We appreciate you, and when you go tonight, please remember us.
Thank you, Ms. Ralph. Really, really appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Raff. Really, really appreciate that. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Remmers, you gotta go right after that.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Uh, the same thing, I won't take up too much of your time. I just, I wanted to make a report on the, uh, Grand Forks Police Department, uh, policy on body cams, and mainly, they, they have a policy, but they're not following it. Uh, the policy is, you remember, officer arrives at the scene, he turns on his camera, and he doesn't turn it off till the event is done. Uh, if there's something that comes up that they have to turn it off, they have to document why they turned it off. Uh, they also have a policy, when they interview a witness, they have to have the video camera on, so that this is recorded, or as an alternative, have to keep really detailed notes. In the event of the, the, uh, Great Train Stoppage of tenth of October of last year, uh, seven officers arrived. Only one officer followed the G F P D policy. And the only reason he followed it, he was a young recruit, and he didn't know better. Two particular things that bothered me, uh, there's so proud of, by the way, the picture on the flyer here, is of two of the officers who were at the present, and their body cams were off during the entire incident. Uh, but, uh, one of the things I really was concerned about, uh, the arresting officer has his body cam on, per policy, as he drives up to the scene. He stops the car, he steps out of the car, looks around, and promptly turns off his body cam for the rest of the incident. Thus, we're not recording vital evidence for both the prosecution and for the defense. Plus, during this entire event, at numerous times, uh, the, uh, patrol car, body cams, and whatnot, pick up, uh, up to four officers interviewing the train crew. And these are the only two reliable witnesses other than myself at the event. Well, not one single second was ever recorded by any of the officers who had body cams. They made a deliberate attempt to turn the body cams off or not have them on, beginning with when they interviewed these key witnesses. And I would hate to see these same officers involved in a really serious crime, uh, where a, a, uh, you know, really vicious criminal, not like me, uh, would get off because the police are not following their own policies. And I think you should, uh, either get the police department to follow their policies, or, or if they're not gonna follow the policies, just take their little electronic toys away from them, give them to some other department that may, uh, ask them useful. Uh, any questions or?
Questions for Mr. Remmers?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for seeing me.
Mr. Spicer, please.
Everybody, how we doing? Couple of questions, I guess. I'd like to be, um, addressed to, uh, our state and city. I've been here for one reason, and because a lot of people have asked me to ask the question. They would like to know, uh, where the developments are and where we stand with Foo Fang right now with the letter of credit, with the rumor that the city is, is negotiating right now to, uh, buy that property back. Or could you give us an update and let us know tonight at this meeting where we stand with Foo Fang? Is that in the agenda at all?
Yeah, Mr. Goss will give that update. Uh, I believe he's gonna have it under city administrator comments. Uh, I think Kyle's gonna give something this time, and so that should be discussed.
Great, great. That's good with that, then. Also, I'd just like to ask another question of Mr. Gostad. Could you give, uh, for the record, could you give us an opinion on why the security cameras in this particular building are not viewable by the public? I think he's got it. I, I would like it on record.
Well, I think it has been emailed to his public records.
I'm asking him, if that's okay.
Address the council, please, sir.
I'm addressing your turn.
No, you would address the council.
Oh, I love going around and running with you, you know, something. Why do you step in where you don't have to? Can I ask him a question and get an, get an answer for the record? He works for the city, doesn't he?
We're the elected.
Can I get that answer from you? Does Mr. Gostad work for the city?
Yes, he does.
Okay. Because of you now, I am in the city limits, okay? So I think the people of this town and the people that live in the city limits now deserve an answer to a question.
Do you not know the answer?
No, I don't know the answer.
You didn't receive an email on that?
No, no, not, not explained.
Mr. Gostad, thank you.
Apparently, you've been involved in it, so maybe you can tell me.
Mr. Gostad, as, as far as I know, he's given you the answer. If he hasn't, then you'll receive an email answer.
I didn't get it.
Okay.
I wanted for the record, that's why I'm here. Not only for my own personal, but for everybody here to understand why the security cameras are not viewable to the public. Are these meetings viewable to the public?
These meetings are kind of live.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm saying, why aren't the security cameras then viewable to the public?
I believe he'll send you the email with the answer, sir.
It's the same old thing we've been, okay, I really disagree with you, man. Because if you were gonna have to put up with what we did for fifteen months.
Mr. Spicer.
You would have, okay, I disagree with that lady. On, on the ten thousand people or whatever it is, I don't know if she got her numbers, that people are thinking you're doing a great job. I think her, her numbers are fabricated, and I can disagree with those numbers completely because I know for a fact that there's fifty-four hundred people that disagree with what this council has been doing for fifteen months. Okay, so we don't trust you. That's why we come to the meetings. Okay? Last week, we got all this comment about, about citizens' comment being taken away. Were you doing us a favor by citizens' comment? No, you're not doing us a favor by citizen comment. That's our right. So don't think for one minute that you are gonna take that right away from us and get away with it, like you have done all this, that you just are not accountable for any of this stuff. Okay, we have a right to come here. We have a right, whether you belong in this community or not, maybe you're not, maybe you're from the outside of this community. But maybe you have vested ties or, or businesses or whatever in this community, so you're still entitled for public comment. Okay, no matter what the situation is, that you're not gonna take our First Amendment right away. Thank you.
And I want to address the council.
Thank you.
You guys are landlords now? The council's landlords?
So, your question?
The council is now landlord.
Yeah, the city's been landlord, the judge's the owner of the authorities for decades since.
So, so many, how many other buildings do you guys own and buy?
Well, there's a lot more a few years ago. A lot of them have been sold. Corporate Center, the Sears Building, Corporate Center two, so it's much less than it has been in the past, and I hope that will sell the majority of them that are used for public use.
Because my concern with that is, as my concern with everything else, things aren't well looked after. And, and we heard two weeks ago how, how the people that your landlords over, aren't very happy with what you do or say. And, and they pretty much showed us what you say is not the truth. And you know, if you're gonna be in any kind of business and, and run it, like you guys run this council, it's gonna go down the hole, and you're gonna lose money. And, and see, right now, I can understand why this city is having trouble with taxes. How many businesses, these big apartment buildings in uptown here, have been, been given a pilot program? A ninety percent tax deferral. You know, instead of paying four hundred thousand a year in taxes, they're paying forty. And then you wonder why there's a tax deficit around here? And you know, anybody that pays any attention can, can find a problem to come up here and view it every week. Just like my friend, Mr. Sanders. You know, in three different weeks, he's brought up three different topics. And you guys just run over anybody that says anything. You, you people really don't comprehend. You don't listen. It's just like Mr. Gostad, you know? He's in a group all by himself. And you know, there, there's really no leadership here. Because if there was some leadership, then when there's a problem with something, it would be addressed rather than just overlooked. And it's gotten to be where things are said that I won't even bother replying to because it's so ridiculous. And time and time again, Mr. Sandy. You know, he steps out of line, but it's okay, because that's Mr. Sandy. And you know, he keeps trying to think that he never is unfair or unjust to anybody. But he does it time and time again. And it, it really seriously bothers me that the rest of this council can sit and go along with this week after week. And now I see even more people that you people make part of your public little program. And, and you know, it just hurts. It's hurting our public. And if anybody can find me ten thousand people that would say anything nice about what you people have been doing from this city, I will pay them ten thousand dollars. I will gladly do it. Because I cannot find these people. These people do not live around me. I put three Foo Fang signs up over a year ago. Not one of them has been touched to this day. You know, people are always complimenting me for what I've been doing for the last year and a half. Like I told, I don't enjoy this at all. It's, it's a most miserable, miserable day of my life. Because I really wish things weren't like this. I wish you people would take what you're doing seriously, not for your own selfish reasons, but for why people elected you. These people voted for you believing that you would serve them. So please, I ask you, just consider that. Consider doing what people voted you for and, and serving them. Thank you.
Mr. Coachman, please.
Thank you.
Because. Yeah, if you can't approach it, please just set the papers there.
Could you press that, please?
If we're late past the papers, please. Mr. Coachman, this is your time to speak, please.
Yes, I know.
Could anybody pass this? Go ahead, Mr. Coachman.
Okay, I'm gonna read it anyway. Uh, for the eyes of, uh, First Peter three, twelve, for the eyes of the Lord who are righteous and the ears of hope and unto his prayers, but the face of the Lord against them, that I do evil. Oh, she's fine. Proverbs fifty-three, the eyes of the Lord in every place behold the evil and the good. Proverbs two, five, twenty-one, the ways of man are before the eyes of the Lord and plunder all his domain. Okay, so the questions I have, and it's read right here, because I'm gonna read it to Mr. Weigle, and I guess Mr. Bean here, or else it's on there. Have you compromised your office or your position? Have you been threatened and intimidated, put in or under duress, or any situation of physical or mental harm that would do you any harm to you or your family? Have you been told not to answer the citizen in any form without authority, authorization? Again, yes means yes. No answer, that means you don't say nothing, you just look like in a, in a thousand man stare, means yes, and no means no. So they're pretty much definitive on what are you gonna do? So by being silent, really isn't being silent. You need to make a stand, and that's what I want to find out, and there's a reason for that. And for this, and Mr. Sand, are you compromised by any form of domestic enemies?
No.
Are you, have you been under any domestic?
I'm not interested in answering a bunch of your questions, but no.
Okay. Um, so are you?
We're gonna, we're gonna do this again, Mr. Coachman.
This is my time. This is my time. This is my time. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Are you under duress, or have you been compromised? Have you been compromised?
No, I'm not, Mr. Coachman.
By any form of domestic enemies?
No, I'm not, Mr. Coachman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please move on.
Thank you.
No.
Just, no, thank you. Mr. Webber, that's a yes. Is there, someone's a yes. Go ahead, say yes.
He's been compromised, please stand up.
Have you been compromised?
Would it be all right if I took a moment and responded?
Yeah, please. All right, right now, all I want is a yes or no. We can talk about that after I get done with my questions.
If anybody that wants to respond, yes, go ahead. Anyone's been compromised.
Are you, are you telling people how to answer that question? Are you telling people, believe it or not, that is a subtle way of derussing people by telling them what to do, because they are full adults, right? So you're telling, because you did it the last time, you, Mr. Gostad, said, you don't have to answer that. What does that say? That is saying, if you say something, we could come after you. You don't need to say a word, Mr. Mayor. You don't need to say, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to say a word with this here. These individuals have the opportunity to answer their cell. By you telling them to say yes or no, you're putting words in their mouth. That is a subtle. No, that's right. I'm asking, because. I'm not in his authority.
Nobody here is under anyone's authority.
Really?
Really.
Okay, let.
If you wish to, go ahead, Coach, Mr. Coach.
Let me continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Webber.
Yes or no?
Mr. Coachman, may I respond to what you handed out two weeks ago and what you've handed out tonight?
No, all I want tonight is, have you been compromised by your office or position? Yes or no?
We've already been clear.
I asked you that tonight, sir.
Can you explain to me?
Can you say, do you know what compromised?
No response would mean yes.
Because sometimes you feel like you're under duress, and you'd rather not say anything. You don't know if you've stuck your toe, you have to figure about it? No, you know if you're under duress or not.
We, we are no, under no duress.
No, I'm about saying, wait, I'm asking you.
I am under no duress.
You're under no duress. Okay. What about compromise your office or your position?
No, my answer, th- these really aren't questions that you've written.
I'm, I'm asking you the questions.
It's part of why I had a difficult time trying to come up with an answer, because I was trying to consider what you've written, and there, there are actually no questions on here.
Mr. Webber, the last time you weren't even paying attention, so I don't know what you're doing.
Fair enough. And, and I've kind of stopped paying attention, but after you left.
All right, thank, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. And. Thank you for answering.
I realized that there's no question.
Thank you for answering my question. That's all I wanted. A yes or no, that's
two weeks ago.
Mr. Webber, could you stop my time? Because obviously, it's not doing it. Sorry, Mr. Coachman. Mr. Gostad, are you compromised your office or your position?
Who's the best at council, Mr. Coachman?
You know, the reason I said that, because I wanted the three little agencies to hear.
Mr. Coachman, please sit down and time is completed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way.
Your time's completed, Mr. Coachman. Listen again. Mr. Pecor, please.
Good evening, council. Talk back to Paul. Um, the reason why I'm here tonight is to speak, uh, Foo Fang. And the topic I'd like to speak on is a failure of Foo Fang. Clearly, nobody has had a good time involving Foo Fang. And when I look at it, and I believe I'm the only one who's had six-plus successful investments in that processing plants. It is painful to see the city as now a whole, but to none of this pain and anguish needed to happen. Right? And simply, one of the things about investment, you ever heard the expression, some of the best investments you make are the ones you don't make? This is clearly in Foo Fang, even though you didn't make the full investment, the time and effort you put into this project was clearly a waste. And why do I say that? Because the very first thing you should have did is what? Double-check national security. I have no idea if Foo Fang is a friend or a foe, right? They come from six thousand miles away in China. And furthermore, my opinion doesn't matter. You know why my opinion doesn't matter? Because I don't have the responsibility, the authority, or the power to stop. Who does?
Because I don't have the responsibility, the authority, or the power to stop. Who does? All right, Mr. Sandy, you obviously don't have, United States Air Force. So I've said this time and time again, if you have proper legal counsel, right? And I said that early on, right? Part of the reason why I'm successful in ag processing developments is I engage qualified and independent people. Had you did that, the first stop would have been with Cepius. Right? I know about the application, right? Because why? Ask questions of Cepius. I was agreeing to that process. Had the city and Foo Fang been both named to the process, right, the full review would have occurred. What would have the review said at that point? They're a national security risk. I don't know the reasons why, and it doesn't matter to me why the process would have gone through. A simple analogy, like Mr. Weigle, if you were employing somebody and they have a felony in there in the past, you can't employ them with a felony. Doesn't matter what the felony is. I didn't realize this. There's over twenty some different types of felony. So anyway, with that in mind, I'm glad to see going forward with epitome energy is my understanding you did the proper background check. So that's fantastic. Switching gears, um, and this has to do with all the overall, I would say communism and democracy. Do you know what the difference is between a democratic community process and communism is? In a democratic process, the people get to run the government. In a communist country, right? The government runs the people. I think a lot of us feel back here that it's more of a communist process with people like me came time and time again and said, hey, let's have a conversation. I'm on the other side of it. It's not my opinion. These are facts you should consider. And you guys are just like, stole all me and everybody that opposed you. Even on national security, right? Mayor Bruschinski, August eighteenth, two U.S. senators said, stop, don't go ahead. They have a letter for you to sign. These people have national security information. And you essentially told two U.S. senators to go pound sand. That's crazy in my mind. They have national security information. They're trying to help you, just like I am. I, that part I don't understand. And the reason why this is, I call it dumb and dumber, law firms are engaged both at the city level with the Cepius process and Foo Fang's attorney is they didn't realize, even if you had a non jurisdiction for Foo Fang, agencies inside Foo Fang can come around and stop it. That's what the United States Air Force did. Eminent domain is the ultimate tool of the toolbox. You don't have to be the brightest bulb on the tree to realize that. Do you know where the last time they used it to protect national security? And are you familiar with the Southern Wall? Right? They went across lots of private property. What tool in the toolbox did they use? Eminent domain, right? Was that a good thing? We all like secure borders, secure walls. And for me, it sounds simple with Foo Fang. I don't know what the risk was, but I'm very glad that they stopped it. I can't understand as American, why wouldn't you embrace it? Why wouldn't you demand that Foo Fang and you both danger on the application? With that, I thank you, Conny, for your time and wish you well going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pecor. All right, thank you, Ms. Lenmark. We'll move on. We've got two proclamations. All right, we'll start out with World Wish Day two thousand twenty-three. Whereas Make-A-Wish Foundation, uh, Make-A-Wish was founded by family friends of seven-year-old Chris Grecious, who got to got his wish to be a police officer on April twenty-ninth nineteen eighty. And whereas the organization known as Make-A-Wish has since granted more than five hundred thousand wishes worldwide, operating in every community in the United States and in nearly fifty countries worldwide. And whereas four forward-thinking and generous North Dakotans brought the mission of creating life-changing wishes for children's ages two and a half to eighteen years old with critical illness to our state in nineteen eighty-five. Whereas Make-A-Wish North Dakota has granted more than a thousand wishes in our state over the last thirty-eight years, delivering hope and joy back in the lives of children with critical illness. And whereas when a wish is granted, a child replaces fear with confidence, anxiety with hope and sadness, or I, anxiety and hope and sadness with joy. And whereas research has shown that wishes can improve a child's quality of life and produce better health outcomes. Whereas Make-A-Wish depends on referrals, local volunteers, and donors to realize its vision, reaching every eligible child to make their wishes come true. Now, therefore, Brandon Bochensky is the mayor of Grand Forks to hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth two thousand twenty-three as World Wish Day and City of Grand Forks. And the last one here is National Small Business Week two thousand twenty-three proclamation. That one's on there. I'm gonna start at the top here. Whereas America's strongest economic growth in forty, in almost forty years has been driven by the resilience of our small businesses that, despite a world pandemic, continue to find innovative solutions to our country's greatest challenges. Whereas by renewing our commitment to supporting small businesses, we can maintain our global competitiveness, build a stronger nation where everyone can succeed from the bottom up and the middle out. Whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since nineteen sixty-three to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. United States, Small Business Administration, and other government agencies. Whereas Grand Forks supports and joins this national effort to recognize the contributions to small businesses for the American economy and their importance to ensuring our local community remains vibrant today or vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, to hereby proclaim April thirtieth through May sixth as National Small Business Week. Thank you. Mr. Bernstein, please.
Yes, uh, this will be the last update I'll give you guys before our final report in June. The legislature at about three in the morning on Sunday morning voted on their last bill and adjourned. Um, that leaves them, I believe, uh, five days left. Uh, there are eighty days if they need to reconvene in some fashion. So just a a couple of things. We're still, we're still, um, gathering all the numbers. The last bill they voted on was the Office of Management and Budget. There's lots of things in the bill. We'll touch on that a little bit. Um, uh, from a Red River Valley water supply standpoint, a hundred and eighty million dollars in the, in the Senate Bill twenty twenty for the Red River Valley water supply. Um, that, that's, that's good. It, it means not fully funded, but it gets us another two years. They also included a hundred, an extra hundred million dollars into the water infrastructure revolving loan fund with some of that money dedicated for the local match for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. Um, for the, uh, Career Impact Academy, uh, there was a bill early on in the session where the, the the money at the federal level is being hung up, so the bank in North Dakota was going to distribute money. Once the federal money comes in, the bank in North Dakota will, will, will absorb it. Um, there was also the concern of inflation over the time it's taken for this, so, um, late in the session, they approved an extra twenty-six point five million for all of the career impact centers um, across the states to try to cover that inflation cost.
Is that a loan or a grant?
That, that, that is a grant. That is a grant. That is, that is the state trying to fill that, that, uh, inflationary cost to get, to get these projects going. Um, well, one of our, uh, main, uh, priorities coming in was, I shouldn't say one of our main ones, but one of our priorities coming in was, uh, potentially with the, the prairie dog funds, the, you know, the, the, the money that comes through the legacy fund and trickles down and certain buckets fill up, and eventually there's a city and county bucket. We had the request to our legislatures, which we thought was well received, of not increasing the city, the city and county bucket, but did just move it a little bit fur- further in front in line. Um, they did not do that. And in fact, uh, there's an extra hundred and seventy-five million dollars that needs to be filled now before it gets to the city and county bucket. So we're disappointed in that one. And then I had mentioned, uh, been mentioned in the last several reports that they were working on, uh, House Bill ten forty, which was, uh, ending the pension, uh, under N D first, the defined benefit pension plan. Um, that bill did pass. That bill was signed by the governor. Um, and they putting money towards paying off the unfunded liability. Part of the reason with the prairie dog, uh, prairie dog buckets, more money in front of us, that they added a bucket to help cover the ongoing pension costs. Um, as, as those that are currently in the pension plan are going to honor. And then it was ending the pension for all new hires, January one, twenty twenty-five. And then at about two in the morning on Saturday, they made an amendment to that Office of, uh, the O M B budget, and, uh, in there, they accelerated the time of ending the pension and moving it up to January one, twenty twenty-four. So I, I bring that up to you guys. I, it's not going to be tonight, but I do believe Tangi is going to be giving the council updates on the benefit plans that the city will have in front of it, um, the overall compensation package that, that the city has. You do, looking at you guys as, as you're discussing, discussing the twenty twenty-four budget, that will be part of the discussion now that the, the pension, uh, will be close to new hires in January one. So with that, uh, again, there'll be a full report probably sometime in June, um, but I'll, I'll turn it to our chair, uh, House Member Weber.
Mr. Weber, I just make one comment first. I did want to say that it was a, a, a pretty big win too. The Children's Museum got allocated five million dollars, which brings out a little close to, uh, not only to fruition, but I think to a groundbreaking, hopefully, at some time in the next, uh, year, eighteen months. So that's gonna be, that was a huge win. Uh, seeing Grand Sky, they could quite get the full ask, including ten million to build out that time acting infrastructure they need for T R M C. I know some of us are probably gonna file a report, but these are some big wins for, for Grand Forks and uh, despite some changes with our legislative makeup, um, and appropriations specifically, I think Grand Forks uh, came up fairly well in the session. I want to just give a, a real thank you to all our legislators. They worked, uh, really, you know, extremely hard, whether they were veterans or, or their first term. Uh, they did a great job fighting for some business marks. So I'm gonna shut up. Uh, Mr. Weber, please, it's your, your committee.
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky. Um, every two years, we, uh, come to the end of a legislative session, and it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to take a moment to reflect on where we've been, who we are, and our, our plans for the future. Uh, but this legislative session was not without victories, as Mayor Bochensky has just pointed out. Specifically, we, uh, we owe appreciation to our legislators who work to support important funding for our roads and water infrastructure, especially the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, as, as John pointed out, which has been a priority of the cities for many years. This project would help to assure a continuous flow of water from the Missouri River during periods of extreme drought. And Mayor, uh, that's, that's great news about the Children's Museum. Children's Museum. With that noted, uh, I am concerned about the disruption in our longstanding relationship with our, uh, legislative delegation. Um, over the last twelve years and longer, we've been tremendously successful in working with our legislative delegation to educate the rest of the state about our city's role in supporting the future of our state, especially in relation to U N D, Grand Forks Air Force Base, and our ag-related economy. Our role in the team Grand Forks approach has been success- successful in helping to bring appropriated funds to our community and in establishing a statewide reputation for being a collaborative community with everyone generally pulling in the same direction. Unique among other cities, we've been known for collaboration between the city, county, U N D, the base, the school district, and especially with our legislative delegation. There has never been lockstep agreement, and of course legislators have both their own autonomy and their obligation to serve a variety of constituents. This session, we have continued to provide the same level of outreach and communication. We have not enjoyed the same level of responsiveness that we have enjoyed in the past. One key illustration is that this session, one of our very top priorities was preservation of our pension plan for city employees. Our best recruitment and retention tool, a tool that is particularly important during a period when hiring is already so difficult and when being understaffed creates additional expense as we have sometimes had to contract for services with for-profit entities. At the same time, the top priority of the legislature at the beginning of the session was workforce development. Indeed, the need for labor was seen as so important at the beginning of the session that there was a call for legislators to demonstrate how their proposals supported the state's critically important workforce development needs. Instead, the legislature passed the most expensive bill in North Dakota history. As Earl Palmroy noted in his April fourteenth editorial, a big spending bill producing little benefit. Who benefits from this? Wall Street bankers who will come in and set up precarious 401K-type products with fee schedules beyond what they can get from our well-managed pension funds. Additionally, the divine contribution plans shift the risks onto the backs of workers, provide great revenue streams for large banks, and the tr- transition from the defined benefit pension to defined contributions is projected to cost the state five point three billion dollars while providing a less secure retirement for our state and city employees. The single most expensive piece of legislation in the state's history. There is the possibility that this issue will be studied over the next interim, but it will be a postmortem study as ten forty killed the pension regardless of what might be learned from studies during the interim. Beyond that, we should also consider a generally quiet but no less essential legislative priority for the city, and that is our perennial protection of our home rule authority, which is based on a basic conservative tenet that local government knows the most about local needs and that those who pay the local bills and their representatives should make those spending decisions. Specifically, this session, there were two library bills. One, House Bill twelve, twelve oh five, requires us to follow federal law, which we were already required to follow. This was a waste of time other than providing a grandstanding opportunity for a handful of legislators. The other, Senate Bill twenty-three sixty, sought to impose unnecessary procedures and completely undefined costs on local libraries across the state. It's hard to imagine that a bill seeking to support children or families in a meaningful way, I think of school lunches or childcare support, would ever be passed without a fiscal note. But this, this nuisance and culture war bill included no fiscal note, meaning that there was no fiscal responsibility from the state in relation to the potentially exorbitantly high cost it was willing to impose on local communities. In fact, in passing this bill, the state exempted their own library. We should always be cautious when there is no apparent problem in our community, including no complaints from our taxpayers and no study or discussion uh, of legislative action during the interim. And then suddenly, there's a hyperbolic fear mongering spurned on by out-of-state forces. Our librarian told us there was no problem, and yet our legislature sought to impose processes and expenses at the local level. Fortunately, we were saved by the governor. Thank you, Governor Burgum. We should always work to protect our home rule authority and to assure that Bismarck does not impose unnecessary and reckless expenses on our local taxpayers. With that all noted, let me again repeat our appreciation for the state's support for many of our city's infrastructures. Thank you.
Mr. Weber. Any questions for Mr. Bernstein or Mr. Weber?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernstein did an excellent job.
I always appreciate your work, Mr. Bernstein. All right, we'll move on to four public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
Four point one, determination of protest, application in Milliards, and we have received no protests.
All right, we should see, uh, received no protests. Anybody here to speak on four point one? Over the public hearing. All right, seeing no one, that public hearing period is closed. Open up to the council for comments or motions. No. A motion approved from President Senator Mr. Sosowski. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor receiving by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries unanimously.
Four point two, determination of protest for Project eighty-six forty, District seven seventy-three, reconstruct South Twenty Street, Seventeenth, Twenty, and Ninetieth, South.
All right, thank you. Open the public hearing. You want here to speak on four point two? All right, seeing no one, same routine. We got a motion to approve from Mr. Weber, second to Mr. Cavani. Seeing no further discussion, all of the favor six by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to five, uh, action items. I know we've got item five point two and five point eight that had um, some updated, some have those called. Any other items outside of five two and five eight that council might pull for the discussion this evening? Just give me a second. Still run out, no. You have five eight and five two, yeah. All right, we'll move for motion then. All right, we'll move on to say. Uh, five, we gotta read it real quick. That is five point one, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, and five point seven. So if I can, motion to approve those items. Got motion from Mr. Sosowski, second from Mr. Lonski. All those in favor signify by sending aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries unanimously. And five point two and five point eight.
Five point two, the award for Project eighty-six forty, District seven seventy-three, reconstruct South Twenty, um, Seventeenth, Twenty, and Ninetieth.
Mr. Graff, so you had an update on this one, please?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Bochensky, member of City Council. Uh, this will be, uh, one of the last or larger, uh, bidding bids for the year. It's getting late in the year for bidding. Uh, we are happy with the bid, by the way. Uh, bids were received and opened on, uh, April twenty-seventh. We had two, two bidders uh, of construction and strata. Uh, of construction was the, the low bidder on the project. Uh, the bid was in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. I will note that this was just over three hundred dollar difference from our engineer's estimate. Really proud of our guys that, that have been really nailing these estimates this year. Yeah, in this bidding environment with the unknowns that we have out there right now, uh, that, that's remarkable work. So I just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate the team that put that together.
Great work. If it was the crisis rate, you'd have won both showcases. We've got a motion to approve from President Sandy and a second from Miss Osowski. All right, see for discussion. Uh, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Graff.
Five point eight, change order number one for City Project eighty six fifty one, the river will be captured by.
Mayor Burchinsky, uh, Member City Council, what you have in front of you is, um, it's a simple change order, just goes beyond my, uh, fifty percent authority. So uh, back in late twenty-two, and we went out for bids to Reverb Station One. Um, you ordered the bids in January, um, they were uh, very low numbers, some real low numbers that came in, did a pre-construction monitor, bond mold underneath in the insulation last week. So again, we were originally going to utilize the insulation that was there with more than what we should we have. So I'm recommending a change order of forty-one thousand four hundred to be approved. Questions?
Got a motion approved from Mr. Palm, second from Miss Lonski. Do you have any questions for that?
I think it, where, where is this one coming from? Oh, I'm sorry. The funding is still going to come from, uh, one twenty one, twenty one. Yeah, it's, it's gone. It's, it's gone. Out of that, I mean, so now we're on this. Compared to the original bids, the bids were low. Yeah, so we were expected. Um, so what we, what we did, we, we called a, I guess I could call it an engineer's estimate as well, uh, with, with that the bids would actually be much higher than the two hundred and ten thousand. So when I brought it to council, um, early in, in January, we did for one part of the building and then we had a commitment, but they, they were going out, so council decided to award, award both. So there's, there's been some wiggle rooms what we originally budgeted in twenty one, twenty one. There's, there's nothing there. It's just, it's just over, uh, for my authority. So, thank you.
All right, sounds good. We got a motion in second. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, items, we're on the six now, information items.
Six point one, H R for a linkback report, but it's like quarter.
Thank you. And I, I would point out, I want to just thank the H R team and staff in general. I think you're seeing a lot of cities across North Dakota that are having some trouble, um, with workforce from top administration all the way through it. And I think we, we felt well, pretty well here in the city of Grand Forks. So I want to thank, uh, definitely each and every employee and all the work that everyone's been doing to keep the city running, doing a good job, so.
Then six point two is your statement and changes cash balance. That's a trigger.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thor said. On to seven approval of minutes of bills.
Seven point one, betterless and engineer's estimate as cash.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy and a second, um, anyone from Miss Lonski, second from Miss Lonski. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And since point two minutes, we're under seventeen.
All right, you have motion approved, as is, as is, as is from President Sandy, second from Mr. Cavani. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post him sign. Minutes are approved as is. Move on to eight, the city administrator comments, Mr. Phelan, I know Mr. Goss was going to pick you back up.
Thank you, Mayor Burchinsky and members of, uh, City Council. Handful of updates for you. Number one, uh, as the council president Sandy said, thank you to Tammy Luzur and and, uh, we've been around here for a while, Council President Sandy. So a great job in line with Mel Carson, John Hurst, Paul O'Acquon, now Tammy Luzur. So uh, thanks for making us proud. And, and this isn't one day to shine, but obviously, uh, she and her team are working every day of the year to come to this meeting and really form, but it's an accumulation of a year's work and of professionalism and so, um, what another great job. And thank you, Tammy, for continuing that, um, really perfect work moving forward. I want to give you a, a heads up, um, Council President Sandy, we are planning to put on the city council agenda in that, uh, comment period. We, we said we'd bring it back to the next community hall meeting, so that'll be on there for further discussion. Um, um, as Mr. Bernstein said, uh, we're going to give you an update on the compensation study. Haven't heard from him for a while, so we got a draft now and so Tangi will, that's going to come here and then discuss that with you. And we're right with that particular study. Also, we'll update you on where we're at with the various, uh, pension, uh, plans. And so we're going to end up with a, a potpourri of, uh, different pension plans um, as we move forward. Um, and, uh, the other thing we're going to talk about at the next call meeting, we'll give you an update on Epitome Energy. We have sent a draft, uh, development agreement to Epitome Energy. And then, uh, on both Epitome Energy and Memorial Village Two, what we're planning to move forward with, uh, some pilot recommendations. So we have been working with Acre Tilly. Um, in particular, in the Memorial Village Two, remember the Memorial Village Two is the, the, the one large unit. They combined those two units with the collegiate, uh, style softball diamond. And now we're going to finance that. So uh, in the spirit of, uh, you guys finding out sooner rather than later, we're going to brief you on, on both those projects from a pilot perspective and also from a development agreement perspective. So you'll get a heads up sooner rather than later. Um, Council President Sandy, um, and then also Council Vice President, uh, Weber, your honor, local government advisor committee did send out an email today, hoping that we can get together on May twenty second. Um, regarding that, I think there is some uh, Memorial Village would like to start moving forward with their project in July. So they want to see kind of where they, you know, rest with, um, with their, um, pilot agreement. You will have at the local government advisor committee, we'll have Michaela Goof from Acre Tilly will provide you the brief from both those projects. Also wanted to give you an update on another, um, paper business project. Um, our staff named Water Works is working with River Fire Refinery. They are looking to move forward again this year. And, and so I suspect you'll have another update on what their, their plans are. There'll be reinvestment in their existing facility as, as in, in addition to maybe a possible expansion. But again, similarly to Epitome Energy, you'll know that sooner rather than later, obviously we hold, uh, permits, um, before they can move forward, but you'll have to hear some updates. I think the good, the good answer is, as we've said all along, um, is that they are planning to renew that facility and, and expand it and we hope for further investments and further success. So that's what we do on a day-to-day basis. We, uh, celebrate people's successes and help facilitate it. And it's good that they're going to want to reinvest in that facility and be successful again after all these lessons learned. So with that, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Goss that has some, has some good news and, uh, Mr. Goss did, uh, get some really uninformed, um, um, negative comments here that are really unchallenged. And so um, I know one thing, our team, uh, department heads and administration love working with Mr. Goss and and hold his vice steer. And he's a really great teammate and a terrific attorney. So with that, I'd hand it over to Mr. Goss there.
It's, uh, Mayor, the council members, uh, thank you, Mr. Phelan, for those kind words. Uh, couple of things happened over the last week. Um, as you know, uh, I think I reported this last council meeting that, uh, with respect to the petition, um, to put the vote, the development agreement into a citywide vote. Um, if you recall, the district court, I ruled in our favor. Uh, dismissed that action, uh, including that it wasn't subject to a citywide vote. There was an appeal to North Dakota Supreme Court. Um, when the decision by the council not to go forward with Foo Fang, uh, was made, and there was a motion to dismiss, uh, that appeal. Um, oddly, the petitioners opposed that petition. Um, and, and then once we sent out the notice of termination documentation, uh, the attorneys that are representing the city then filed some supplemental information. They included the standstill agreement, uh, the non-extension document that we got from the letter credit bank, the termination notice, and then the demand that we made on the letter of credit. That was submitted on, uh, April twenty first. Um, and on April twenty fifth, the North Dakota Supreme Court, uh, issued an order to dismiss all concluding that the appeal, uh, was moved. Uh, so that case is, is now completed. Um, I also reported, uh, last week, so last week or it must have been last week, that we had made a demand on the letter of credit. That demand was for two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, funds were received in the amount of two million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents on May twenty seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three. So the entire month that we, we, we requested, uh, that they wired it in last, I think we got it last Thursday or Friday. That's why I did thank you. So, um, with that, before I can have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Goss? Mr. Weber, please. So you mentioned that the, the, when we requested that it be dismissed, um, the petition supporters wanted it brought back. Um, in favor of Foo Fang?
They, they opposed the motion, um, and, and the, the issue here, they opposed the motion to have it dismissed as being moved because the project, uh, wasn't going to go forward. We were either going to negotiate something under the standstill or not, but the project wasn't going to go forward. Um, and they, uh, sought to, they opposed that motion. And so the reality is, is that they wanted the Supreme Court to rule that the development agreement should be voted on on a citywide vote, which would have then potentially jeopardized the letter credit demand.
Right. Uh, we're fortunate to have such a wise, uh, city council. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein.
Yeah, President Sandy.
So, uh, Mr. Goss, uh, because, uh, the question was asked earlier, if we are actively negotiating for the purchase of that property, I think it's important to note that the city of Grand Forks is not actively negotiating with anyone for the purchase of the land that's currently owned by, uh, Foo Fang USA. And, um, you, please corroborate that, yes?
That is, that is, President Sandy and the city council members, that is absolutely correct.
Right. And, uh, I think, uh, I can say based upon the conversations that we had, Mr. Weber, the mayor herself, Mr. Phelan, myself, um, when the standstill agreement came up, we had no understanding of what Foo Fang might be interested in discussing, which is why I was supportive of going forward with the standstill because I didn't know what I didn't know. And I think you can corroborate this as well. Once we found out that the reason they wanted the standstill was to negotiate the purchase of the property, will you agree that the general consensus from the group was we weren't interested in buying that property?
I think, I think the, the, um, position of the city was, uh, that buying the property would be a pretty monumental task to get over, uh, to get to, to, to the resolution, but.
And, uh, and you will also agree that we attempted to end the standstill agreement. But Foo Fang's attorneys through Foo Fang disagreed with us and wanted to continue negotiations after we told them we weren't interested in purchasing the property.
There were, there were some discussions regarding that matter, but the, the triggering point for the standstill agreement was if by, by the terms that were negotiated in the standstill agreement was that if we got the non-extension from the letter credit bank, that terminated the standstill agreement immediately.
But, but it is true that we had informed them that we believed the standstill agreement should terminate prior to us receiving that, uh, letter of, of non-renewal of the letter of credit.
We had an email exchange. There is, there is, uh, some communication. Uh, I, the only reason I hesitate is because we were discussing it under certain terms with Foo Fang.
So I, I certainly it's, uh, there were, uh, there were indications made by our group that we were interested in in terminating the standstill agreement. Ultimately, it terminated by their lack of renewal of water credit. Thank you, Mr. Goss. I appreciate that.
All right, any further questions, Mr. Goss? Doesn't matter. All right, thank you, Mr. Goss. Move on to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigle, are you still with us in the comments this evening?
The only thing I would add, Mayor, is just thankful for, um, the people in the legislature. I don't think we're always going to agree with everything they do, but I, I do think they do a lot for the city of Grand Forks and we, we are fortunate to have a lot of members represented on the appropriations committee on both sides. And, um, I'm thankful for the work that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Uh, Mr. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Um, I guess I hope that citizens around the city participate in the letter carriers stamp out hungry events. Um, I found it very disturbing that he stated that one in ten children in Grand Forks go to that hungry. So I just hope that, you know, that you're able to, that you can support that.
Thank you. Very well spoken. Um, let's see, we got Miss Lonski. All right, Mr. Cavani, you know, this evening. I don't believe we have Mr. Bean with us. So, uh, Vice President Weber.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to repeat one more time. I've said it before. The development agreement, uh, crafted by, uh, Mr. Goss that provided a way for the city to explore the, the potentially largest ever economic development, uh, project in our city's history while protecting the city's interest. And ultimately, the reason that the project didn't go forward is because of the, the development agreement. When we had those, uh, twenty-one contingency points and one of those came up, we, we terminated the agreement. Uh, so, uh, again, uh, thanks for your guidance and, and counsel through, through that entire process. And for, uh, your courage standing up, uh, in, in the face of, uh, some, uh, some heckling and, and other annoyances. Um, I'd also like to take a quick moment to comment on the, uh, board of equalization. Um, in, uh, we've been through this, uh, President Sandy and I know a dozen years of work, uh, going through that. And one of the things that we've frequently seen is, uh, I don't, I don't know that that happened tonight or this year, but we've seen it in the past. There are lawyers who will, uh, travel around the country, uh, on fishing expeditions and offer a large properties an opportunity to appeal their property tax. Uh, they, they will take a cut of that. And, uh, I, I just, uh, wish to express my appreciation for the courage to stand up to those, uh, sort of ventures. Uh, but also, uh, the courage to, uh, admit when, uh, we've, uh, perhaps we had a mistake in the evaluation, uh, in the assessment. Uh, and note that the, uh, several, uh, homeowners in our community, uh, house owners in our community, uh, appealed and, and, uh, you, you did a, a review and we approved those tonight. Uh, finally, uh, I'll kind of echo Miss Osowski's comment. I look forward to seeing Mr. Honda out on the second Saturday of May this year. And, uh, look forward to seeing him next year on the second Saturday of May for his thirtieth, uh, shot. Thanks.
All right, President Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, although, uh, the, the public comments tonight were riveting as always, um, there was one point, uh, made that I thought it's a little clarification would be worthy when, um, we were told that two senators uh, presented the letter for you to sign and that they of course have more information than you do. I think it is very pertinent to point out that the governor was involved in that conversation as well as a U S Congressman was involved in that conversation. And both the governor and the congressman also declined to sign that letter. Let's not forget that those people are um, carriers of information as well, probably beyond my expertise or the people in this room. And so um, although it's shock and awe that the senators, you know, they told you, you should sign this and you didn't. And, and shame on you. Well, I think that we should have a discussion to tell you how strong the governor is to why they didn't sign. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments. I was in the middle of the city's review related to the response from that. So certainly the group thing to do would be to wait for that entity to finish its, uh, report. Uh, my only comments tonight, I just want to thank Ms. Graff for coming and thanks, uh, negativity can be extremely contagious. I think uh, the more you let that be contagious, the more it can take over town. And, and just a positive, uh, message that she brought certainly lifted me up. So I just want to thank her for coming. And equally positivity can, can be contagious too. Uh, we're above ground, the sun is shining. I think there's a lot to look forward to. So, uh, with that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Mr. Samyall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.